Okay, City Clerk, are we all ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so kindly. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the San Bruno City Council for October the 19th, 2021, called to order at 5:00 PM. And may we please ask the City Clerk to take role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Next will be public comment for items on the agenda. Just as a reminder, today is a public hearing in regards to the transition to district-based elections. So other than that, if there's something that, other than that topic, somebody from the audience or public wishes to speak, please raise your hand at this time and we'll bring you into the room. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the topic of tonight's meeting, which is to hold a public hearing and provide information regarding the process of transition to district-based elections for council members. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our City Manager to provide some introductory remarks. And then we also, of course, have the District Elections Consultant and other staff that will be available. Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor Medina, members of the City Council. Javon Grosvenor, City Manager. We are here for the second of six public meetings on the City of San Bruno's process to convert to district elections. There will also be two public workshops. This process, as the City Council knows, will go until March of 22nd, March 26th of 2022. Tonight's presentation will be provided by Kristen Parks from NDC. Also available tonight is City Attorney Mark Zaffarano, myself, Assistant City Manager Jennifer Bril, as well as Assistant to the City Manager Jennifer Deanos. All of which make up the internal team that are supporting this project.
City Manager, you went on mute. You're back.
All right. In addition, we have Jennifer Nitwidd from Tri Pepe Smith with City's Public Engagement Consultant that is helping this effort. I will now turn it over to Kristen Parks from NDC to provide the presentation. For the City Council, some of this will be a repeat. Tonight's presentation will begin with a little bit of the information that you've seen before, but we want to make sure that anyone that is tuning in for the first time really receives the full complement of information about district elections, some of the data that you saw in your first public hearing. And then tonight, we're going to go into detail on the district mapping tools. Kristen, take it away.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Parks. I am a consultant with National Demographics, and I am joined by my colleague Jennifer Nitwidd, who is a consultant with Tri Pepe Smith. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that you all can see our beautiful PowerPoint. And I'm just going to start by giving everyone an overview. I know for members of the council and the mayor, this will be a bit of a review. As this is our second districting public hearing, we are well along the way in this process, and it is going to fly by. But if you are just tuning in for the first time and just starting to engage with it, this is the perfect time to start paying attention and think about where you may want district boundaries for your neighborhood or your community. So to members of the public, thank you for being here, and we do hope to hear from you throughout this process. So just as a reminder, what this change represents for the City of San Bruno is a change from an at-large election system in which every voter in the city has the chance to elect all city council members. What we're changing to is a by-district election system, which means that voters within each district will elect one council member to represent their district. And that council member will also be required to live within the district they represent. So this decision was actually made by resolution of the council back in 2020. And now that we have 2020 data from the census, we can effectively begin to draw potential district lines. So I also want to point out to members of the public that one of the things that we've seen over the past several years across the state of California is a lot of cities switching to by-district elections because they either received a letter threatening a lawsuit under the California Voting Rights Act, or like San Bruno, they decided to proactively take the step to make that change to avoid what could be potentially very costly litigation for the city. So San Bruno has proactively made that change. There is no lawsuit. There is no threat of that currently. So that is a positive. And what that means is that we do have a little more time to deliberate throughout this process rather than having a lawsuit clock ticking. So as San Bruno is making this transition, we want to remind everyone in the public that San Bruno currently has a directly elected mayor and a city council with four members. So it is currently proposed that when this transition is occurring, there will be four districts created, one district for each city council member. And this would, of course, the first election that would take place with these by-district elections would be in November of 2022, and the mayor would remain elected at large as that was established by Proposition F, a measure by the voters in 1977. So this is just a visual representation for those who may be more visual learners, right? This is something I believe that the City Manager created for us that just illustrates what it will look like after the transition. So in that November 2022 election, the city will be split into four council districts, and each council district will elect one council member. However, as the red circle indicates, the mayor of this city will still be elected at large. I'm going to pass it for this slide over to my colleague Jennifer.
Awesome, thank you, Kristen, and good evening, councilmembers. As Kristen mentioned, my name is Jen Nitwidd with Tri Pepe Smith. And tonight, I'm happy to chime in on a few slides that touch on the outreach and engagement involved in the process, and we'll go from there. So at this point in the process, as you can see on this slide, and we are really going to be starting to push for community feedback and participation, and it's important for everyone to think about why should community members care? So fundamentally, as we can all imagine, democracy just works better when people are engaged. So being engaged means that community members are aware of the issues, and they're weighing in on the important matters that factor into how the city is run. And second, there are things that your residents just know best about their communities. And so it's essential that those of us involved in the process hear from them about the community. And then lastly, this is a once-in-a-decade opportunity since the census data is released only once every 10 years. And so every 10 years, communities get together and talk about demography. And so this is an exciting time and a rare time as your community to be working through this process. And then on the next slide, here are some of the goals in the districting process. And through the districting process and events like tonight's hearing, we're going to learn from the experts, particularly Ms. Kristen Parks from NDC as your demographer. And this is a complex process, we all realize, particularly since it only comes up once every 10 years usually. So it's an opportunity to educate and explain to the public what this process is and why it's so important. Then, once you've shared information on how the process works, it's important for the experts to hear from the community. Community members will be the stars of the show as the process moves forward. And it's important for the experts to hear from community members because, as we mentioned earlier, community members do know their communities best. And effective districting relies on identifying the neighborhoods and communities that you want to keep together as you consider drawing district lines. And I think Kristen will touch on that a little bit as we move forward tonight, too. And then last but not least, our goal is that community members are empowered to give effective feedback. So by absorbing the content that we'll be sharing today and then by talking with our friends and neighbors, those are all great ways to participate and to provide effective feedback to inform the process that will determine district lines for the next 10 years. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kristen to touch on the timeline.
Thank you, Jennifer. So one of the things that has affected everyone going through districting or re-districting right now are significant delays, month-long delays that we had in the release of census data from the federal government. That data was released on August 12th to the states. However, the state of California then processed that data to make some reallocations and, for instance, counting state inmates at their last-known place of residence rather than in their incarcerated location. So that was supposed to happen on September 20th. It actually happened on September 27th. So even the state had a bit of a delay. In the districting process, there are four hearings that are required prior to adoption of the map. So tonight, we're at our second initial hearing. And just so members of the public are aware, these first two hearings are meant to be timed these first two hearings are meant to be time where the council is listening to the public. We are actually not legally permitted to be considering actual draft maps yet. Um, we will be holding two community workshops in November to demo the public mapping tools, um, some of which are already available on this website, districtingsanbruno.org. And these are available for the public to already get started and, um, submit their, their maps. Um, what happens then is that after the public has ample time to, to submit all of their submissions, um, then it will come back to the council for consideration. And so the, the second two hearings that will take place in January and February are hearings where the council will consider draft maps submitted by the public and potentially also submitted by NDC. Uh, the public will have a chance then to weigh in on those maps before, uh, the final map is adopted. And, um, what we are planning right now is for, uh, there to be a fifth hearing on March eighth and a sixth hearing on March twenty-second. That gives ample time for this map to be adopted, uh, and all of the data of where voters are and where district boundaries are can then be shared with the county registrar of voters so that everything is in place for the November two thousand and twenty-two election. So this will be an ongoing process. This is why we say this is the perfect time to be jumping in and starting to engage with it. Um, I encourage everyone to visit, if they haven't already, districtingsanbruno.org. The full schedule, along with links to all of the materials from the meetings that we've previously held and the upcoming meetings, as soon as those materials are available, will be posted on the schedule page of Districting San Bruno. So the other thing that helps empower the public is to understand the legal requirements that exist for districting. And so these requirements, uh, help us understand what we should consider when we're considering where district lines should be within the city. So always first and foremost, we have federal law, and federal law says that each district should have relatively equal population, meaning that each city council member should represent about the same number of residents. That's the first consideration. Next, we want to be sure we're complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says that district boundaries should be drawn in a way that takes care not to discriminate or dilute the voting power of protected classes of voters. Um, members of the public often ask, what are those protected classes of voters? And those are African-American voters, Asian-American voters, um, Hispanic voters, and Native American voters. So we will be looking at, uh, race and ethnicity in order to ensure that compliance. However, we will also be looking at other demographic factors to help define and identify the communities and neighborhoods that will be grouped together within each city council district. Uh, federal law says that race or ethnicity should never be the sole factor or the predominant factor in drawing a district. So while we're going to look at it, we're also going to look at other data points as well. Those, that's what we're dealing with with federal law. Then we also have state law. And in the state of California, there is a new law, the Fair Maps Act, passed in two thousand and nineteen that gives us a list of criteria that we must consider when drawing district boundaries. Again, the reason this is helpful is because we are encouraging members of the public to actually draw their own proposed district maps for San Bruno. So if you're going to sit down at your desk at home and draw a district map, these are the criteria that you will want to think about so that your map has a chance of being legally compliant. And in fact, it's not unusual for cities to end up adopting a map that was drawn by one of its residents. So the first thing that you'll want to think about is making sure that each district is geographically contiguous. What that means is when you're drawing a district, you're drawing one complete district that is connected, all parts that are connected. There is no disconnected island that you are trying to put in that district. So that has to do with the shape, that's the pretty basic criteria. The second criteria is the one we're going to focus on tonight, which is when we're drawing district boundaries, the state of California says we should minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. So as I mentioned, each district, we can think of each district as being a collection of neighborhoods and communities. Um, what we don't want to do is to draw those district boundaries right through the middle of neighborhoods and communities and divide them up. That reduces their ability to elect representatives through the council and reduces their ability to, um, interact with council members and even know who may represent them. The third criterion under California law is that those district lines should be easily identifiable. You shouldn't have to be a demographer or have any special software technology to know where your city council district ends and where the next one begins. So when we're drawing districts, we try to draw them in a logical fashion so the boundaries are following along waterways or major roads or anything that would be familiar to the public. The fourth criterion under California law is that districts should be compact. So when we're thinking about compactness, we're also thinking sometimes about shape, and some of the stranger-shaped districts that you may have seen in other places are not compact. Um, what compactness is defined as under state law is that your district is not bypassing or avoiding including a particular area so that it can reach farther away to include a more distant area, right? If you did that, you end up sometimes with very strange-shaped districts. However, the list of California criteria is ranked order, meaning that number one, two, and three on this list are more important than number four, right? So we're actually going in order of importance here. So sometimes, some of my clients, uh, will have a city council district that may have a strange shape. It's contiguous, but it may be strange. And that is because it is required, uh, to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, right? So all of these criteria we are, under California law, we're doing to the extent practicable. That is what the law says, we're going to do our best. Finally, I do have a third column here. Because every city is unique, and every city may have other goals for districts that they want to bring to the table. Some cities want every district to touch their downtown business area, um, so that there is this shared, uh, sense of unity around, uh, their downtown, right? So the point I want to make here is that it's absolutely legally permissible to discuss other goals for our districts in San Bruno. However, we can only discuss or consider these other goals after we've already addressed the criteria given by federal and state law. So all of that being said, um, I myself am not an attorney, uh, so if we have any, uh, legal questions, we will be, uh, asking those to, to the attorney. Um, but I do think it's empowering for members of the public to understand the legal framework, um, because it, it is something that we will be coming back to. And when we look at draft maps, we're going to talk about whether or not those maps meet these criteria. So the good news, of course, is despite the months and months of waiting for census data, we now have it. And so for the city of San Bruno, uh, in the two thousand and twenty census, forty-three thousand nine hundred and eight people were counted. And what you see here are citywide, um, some of the demographic features that, um, the Census Bureau has, has provided. What we're really concerned with here is figuring out how many people should each of the districts that we create for San Bruno have. So the blue box here that says ideal district size, what that is, is, well, we're going to take the total population of the city, and then we're going to think about the number of districts we're going to create, which, there are four districts that we're going to create. There are four council numbers currently on council. And so if you take forty-three thousand nine hundred and eight, and you divide it by four, you're going to get this ideal number, uh, which is ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven people. Each district doesn't have to be exactly that ideal size. What we're looking for is a total deviation of less than ten percent. So we're looking for, um, each of our districts to try for that ideal and get, get as close as possible while also making sure that we're addressing all of the legal criteria that I just went over. So, um, I am going to go very quickly through these slides as I have presented them previously. Um, but these slides show you mapped out for the city of San Bruno where, um, different populations are. So each of these slides will show you a heat map where we're going from purple being zero to ten percent of those, um, census blocks, which is what the level at which we're displaying this data. So zero to ten percent for the purple are Latino citizens of voting age. See, that stands for citizen voting age population. So these are our citizens over the age of eighteen. These are our eligible voters who identify as Latino. Of course, and the heat map goes from the purple, cold, to the red, hot. And so those red blocks are where you see seventy-five to one hundred percent of the, of the people on those blocks, um, are Latinos of citizen voting age. Why do we look at things like this? Well, one, for compliance with the Voting Rights Act, and two, so the members of the public can start to think about their own communities of interest and start to identify on a map where people that they share common interests with are in the city. So, um, as you can see on this slide, for African-Americans, um, there's not a lot of variance from block to block. However, I want to caution and say that this map is not showing that there are no African-Americans in the city of San Bruno. It's just showing that there are, in most of the city census blocks, there are ten percent or fewer African-American citizens of voting age, okay? Um, you can see that the Asian-American citizens of voting age are, uh, dispersed throughout the city. And, uh, there, there are certain groupings in certain areas. And keeping in mind, too, one of the things to think about when we're looking at these maps is that we are ultimately going to be drawing four council districts. So it's always helpful, I, I, of course, I love looking at maps. Um, we can, I, you can look at this data on the website on an interactive review map. So that's part of why I'm going to go through it very quickly is because this is available to the public to look at, um, on your own time. Uh, just click interactive review map, and you can look at all of this data. Um, children at home, uh, where are renters versus homeowners in the city. And then I want to circle back to that second criterion required by California law, which is that our district boundaries should minimize the division of our neighborhoods and communities of interest. Most folks are familiar with what a neighborhood is. Our state law was written to say neighborhoods and communities of interest, and then defines communities of interest as a population that shares common interests and should be included in a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. This is a very broad definition of a community of interest, and, uh, it really creates an opportunity for residents of San Bruno who may or may not think of themselves as being a traditional neighborhood, but may be a group of people with common interests or common concerns or common issues that they may interact with the city on. Um, and if they are geographically, uh, concentrated in a certain area and wish to be included within a single city council district, so they have one council member representing them, they have an opportunity to give testimony and input, uh, about their community, identify it to the council so that when we are evaluating draft district maps, we can take care to try not to divide your community across multiple council districts. So that is, that's sort of the basic definition of communities of interest, but, um, there's really no long way to define your community, and we do want to hear from you, uh, as to your neighborhoods and your communities of interest. So again, just two things to think about. If you are, um, going to make public comment either tonight during the public hearing or in the future, think about what brings people together in your community. Um, if, if there's places where, parks that, that people go to, if there's schools, if there's places of worship, shopping centers that people frequent. And then where is the boundary of this community? Um, so that we can know when we look at a map, uh, how to avoid dividing up that community. Not all communities, um, are going to care about whether or not they are in a single city council district. We particularly want to hear about your community, um, if it does want to be within a single council district. However, we'll, we'll be happy to listen to whatever testimony you bring. Um, other things to think about are transit corridors, school attendance zones, zoning areas. Um, anything that resonates with you and your neighbors, uh, are, it, it's helpful information, especially since we are drawing these district boundaries for the first time. Really are, uh, going to be a part of history here because the boundaries that are adopted through this process, um, as my colleague Jennifer mentioned, will be in place for the next decade. So, uh, there is, the, this is a very significant process for the city. So, um, yes, we are in October two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we are expecting our online mapping tool to be, uh, made live this week. Um, however, District R, the software vendor, is having some significant delays. Um, so that is not currently available, the thing you see a screenshot of here. However, we want the public to be able to sit down and start drawing maps right now, if they want. So what we have, our printable PDF map up on the website. And just as a reminder, that website is districtingsanbruno.org. And that's where you'll find, um, the paper, uh, maps, right? Uh, that you, and you don't have to print them and draw them on paper. You can, uh, you know, edit the PDF on your computer, and you can draw your neighborhood, your community of interest, what your ideal council district would look like. Or you can draw a map of, that takes the city of San Bruno and you, and draws all four districts onto it. Whatever you submit will be entered into the public record and will be considered, um, by the council as part of this process. So, uh, for full transparency purposes, um, all maps drawn and submitted by the public will be posted online. Um, and NDC will process those maps and produce demographic reports for each of the maps submitted by the public, as well as, um, a, a quick, um, determination as to whether or not the map meets those legal criteria that I talked about. So, uh, we, while we encourage using these mapping tools and we provide them in order to empower the public, at the end of the day, you know, you can draw a map on a napkin or a, a scrap piece of paper, and as long as you're labeling it, uh, with landmarks or streets, um, we can take it and, and enter that into the public record. So I'm going to pass it back over to Jennifer here.
All right, and as Kristen mentioned, you know, the public mapping tools are available, and so we're looking for that public engagement. Um, the paper, with the paper maps for sure at this point. and so we're looking for that public engagement, um, the paper, with the paper maps for sure at this point. And so with that, there's a lot of outreach that I know that the city of San Bruno is committed to, to, um, make sure that everyone does have the opportunity to learn about this process and make their voice heard. So I won't do as detailed of a rundown as I shared during the September twenty-eighth first hearing where we had a whole presentation devoted to outreach. But I'll just give you a high level summary to kind of give you a recap of some of those items. So as we've kind of touched on throughout the presentation tonight, San Bruno does have a dedicated website, um, districtingSanBruno.org, which I'll show on the next slide. But on that website, if you're able to visit, you'll see the opportunity to visit the Draw on Map page with many of the tools we discussed tonight. There is a contact tab where you can send any feedback directly through the site. And there's a subscribe tab where you can subscribe for ongoing news and updates about the process. So, um, that's a great resource and it will be continually updated as the process moves along. We're also working with the city to send emails to email subscribers, to the city's update and to send, send direct emails to community groups. And we have social media about the process going up in multiple languages about once a week on San Bruno's social media platforms. And we have media outreach going on via predilections about the process. We have a segment on districting scheduled to air on CityNet, what's happening around town, coming up, um, in October or ongoing in October. And we have some print flyers that are currently in work and we'll get those printed and distributed to various community groups and locations across the city. And then we do have several community workshops coming up as we've touched on, including a virtual workshop coming up on November first and then an additional workshop. And it looks like that will be in mid-November. And we'll be announcing that date and time once it's finalized. And really do encourage everyone to share this information with your friends, your family members, your neighbors so that we can continue to get more and more engagement and help inform the process. So then on our last slide, or second to last slide, I should say. Um, this is the second to last slide. So before we open it up for the hearing portion and questions and answers, um, these are the questions that we encourage community members to consider to provide feedback and to be prepared to participate in the process moving forward. So I won't read through each of those, but these are the things we'll want to get feedback on. And then, um, on that last slide, um, now before we open it up for any questions or comments, I'll emphasize one last time how community members can share their thoughts and continue engaging in the process. So here's that screenshot of the website, districtingSanBruno.org. You can sign up for updates via the subscribe tab, as I mentioned. Share your thoughts directly via the contact tab and review meeting materials on the calendar tab and explore all the other tabs on the website as well. And you can email us anytime by emailing districting@SanBruno.ca.gov. And you're welcome to join the first community workshop coming up on November first at seven PM and we really hope to see you there. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you once again for the presentation and the information that you provided for us. Um, as we said, this is a public hearing. So what I would like to do is open the public hearing to any members of the public that wish to speak in case they have places they, and things they need to attend to. If there's any members of the public that would like to ask questions or have comments, now would be the time in which to please raise your hand. Seeing no members of public at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion of second to close the public hearing.
I move. Second.
Motion made, seconded, Salazar Hamilton to close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. So at this time, I'd bring it to my colleagues and see if they have questions on the presentation. There we go. Uh, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you Jennifer and Kristen for your presentation. Um, for the first, um, community workshop that's in person? Just wanted to clarify that.
The first one on November first is virtual.
It's virtual. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, and possibly the second is, depending on what the county says, but is that intended currently to be virtual?
We are still kind of nailing down the dates and locations sometimes, but it, it looks like it might be able to be in person is my latest understanding.
No problem. It's, it's a very dynamic, uh, uh, life that we're dealing with COVID, so that's, that's totally understandable. Um, I really don't have too many questions. I just wanted to clarify for that. Um, it's an interesting process. Um, and just hoping that, uh, more people are able to participate. Um, this was a little difficult today, um, being at five o'clock, I think, and, and people are just kind of scrambling around. But, um, I'm looking forward to that outreach to make sure that we get as many, uh, people engaged as possible. Um, this is so huge in, in determining San Bruno's his, uh, future, right? So, uh, um, I look forward to it. It's, it's, it's very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Mason, please.
Yeah, I just, um, I want to say appreciate the enthusiasm that you bring to your presentation. Kind of, it can be a dry subject, but very impactful. I, um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. The first question is just around in your experience in the districting. What have you seen as the, the biggest obstacle that cities face, um, in this process?
Yeah, um, that's an interesting question. I think that oftentimes it, it can be a very difficult process when cities are dealing with lawsuits that forces them, um, because that does come with a ninety-day clock, right? So in that regard, San Bruno is lucky that we do have a little bit more time, that this has been very intentional, uh, and proactive as a process. Um, I would also say that, you know, one of my other clients, for instance, is the town of Woodside, who is switching to district. And, um, there are other clients in similar situations that are so small that when you take, you know, a community that's so tiny, like five thousand people, and you're trying to break it up, that can be very difficult. Um, San Bruno, I think, to your benefit, you do have some, um, freeways and other sort of natural dividing lines, things that you can think about. You do have some distinct neighborhoods. So, um, that's really going to be, not the challenge, um, but I think really the focus of, of this process will be identifying, um, you know, where are those natural places for districts? And Jennifer, please feel free to, to add from your experience as well.
I actually agree with your point, so right on.
Do you find that, um, districts and what you've read and your experience give, uh, give way to additional, or I should say, enough candidates per district?
Yes, and again, that's usually a, um, a concern that the smaller jurisdictions have. Um, they, they will always ask if it's a jurisdiction of a thousand people, what if we don't have anyone running? Of course, the answer, if you don't have anyone running for that seat, is that then the council will appoint someone, uh, to fill that seat, right? Um, I don't anticipate that happening in San Bruno, but that is, you know, that is, there, there is a way to fill it. We're not going to end up with empty, empty seats. Again, um, city council elections are staggered as well. So we're never dealing with our entire council being up for election in the same year. So that also helps in terms of making sure that there's an adequate candidate pool.
Yeah, I know, um, some of the information I've read says it also makes it more affordable and more reasonable for candidates to run. And I'm curious to know, the, the other side of it is, um, does it also allow for additional candidates to be introduced when you have such a, a small district with the likelihood of a long-term incumbent?
Yeah, um, that, that's an interesting, interesting question. Uh, I'm not sure, I know what the academic literature says on, on the long-term question there, but certainly, um, we do know and we can sort of see this from when the California legislature switched to term limits. Whenever there's an open seat, um, we do actually usually see candidates running more women, uh, more minorities, more people that we may not otherwise see running for office. And, um, the point that the, the council member makes is absolutely true. But when you do switch to districts, the cost of campaigning is usually, uh, lower because if you're sending out campaign, uh, mailers or something like that, you do have, um, a quarter of what you might normally, uh, spend on. So, yeah, I mean, and it's important to just be aware that, that there are pros and cons to, to all of these things, um, but that this decision was made and, um, we are moving forward with it. And I know that the city has, you know, many other questions about how they're, they may want to make changes to, to their government going forward. And, you know, taking all of this step by step, I think it is very important. And you have an excellent staff and team, uh, uh, working with you to help you untangle all of these, uh, intricacies. So we are focused on four, four city council districts and we're going to be able to do it.
And, um, I think just because I think part of having the discussion, having a public hearing, right, is to learn about these and the anticipated and unanticipated consequences of the change. And so of the cities that you work with, um, are the, do you know, or most of those cities, um, do most of those cities already have term limits built into their ci- their cities when they move to district elections?
There's, that totally varies, yeah. And NDC is currently working, uh, in twenty twenty-one with over a hundred and fifty cities, council, uh, cities, counties and special districts across California. Um, and so we see every, every variation, right? Um, so again, that is, that is a totally separate issue.
Separate but connected, I would say. Separate but connected. Um, the other question is, uh, when you talk about the four districts, so, so this item is not going to the voters, um, we're having this conversation. Is that, uh, four districts something that at this point we can talk more about, um, those options? Or are we at four districts and the council is, that, that's, that, there's not going to be a fifth district, a seventh district, that we're at four districts? And how, you know, how is that decision cemented?
Yeah, so what that, um, decision is based on is that Proposition F that establishes a, uh, mayor, directly elected mayor and four council members, right? So that has been in place since the nineteen seventies for San Bruno. There is a potential situation in which, um, additional council seats could be considered. Um, but that is something that requires some historical research into how Proposition F got on the ballot and whether it was... We're getting into legal weeds here. So for anyone in the public who's like, what is going on? This is, this is very much in the lead of this. Um, but I do want to give the complete answer to the best of my knowledge. Um, and certainly, uh, Mark can chime in if necessary. But my understanding is, um, if under the California Voting Rights Act, there is a compelling reason to have more than four seats, uh, whether or not that's even possible as part of the process depends on whether, uh, Proposition F was referred to voters by the council or brought by, uh, petition of residence. So I don't know the answer to that. Uh, we can certainly follow up and let you know more about that. But my expectation as your consultant is that four districts, um, is something that is reasonable for the city of San Bruno and that we should not, uh, expect to have any compelling reason to have more than four at this time.
And, and would that recommendation change if we were, if we had a rotating mayor system, which is something that this council has discussed? And we're actually, you know, it's essentially parallel to, it's having parallel to this districting conversation?
Yeah, I understand that that conversation is happening parallel at, uh, however, I think for the purposes of districting, um, that, if you did make that change, you would need to, if you adopt four council districts through this process and then the change is made, you would have to, uh, redraw the boundaries, right? To, to incorporate another district into the map, right? Um, that is costly, uh, in terms of, of, you know, making a change after you've already invested so much into it. However, it's understandable that that may be what's best for the city. Um, even though it's sort of being talked about concurrently, um, to my understanding, that is something that would happen, that would not go into effect until after this process is completed. Um, so I don't believe that we can take into account the poten- does that make sense? The potential that that change might be made soon after, uh, the map is adopted. You know, I don't think we can take into consideration that possibility, uh, and anticipate it, unfortunately.
Yeah, 'cause the, I guess the way that it would work now, being the only city in the peninsula with a, a directly elected mayor, would be that one district would actually then receive forty percent of any, any vote at any council meeting. Right? Because they'd be represented by the mayor who lives in that particular district along with the council member elected in that district. Is that right?
Yeah, if the mayor is, is a voting member of the council, yes.
Okay. So, and is, is it a possibility to, because we're paying for the process now to also, and this is a question, I think, more for the city manager, but is, is that, uh, we, we have had this conversation. We've been told that we are going to align it with the districting conversation. And so we're having the districting conversation now and I'm wondering how we can save money at a later time um, by having a potentially alternative, um, design should this item go to the voters at a later time?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman, Woman Mason. Let me just restate that to make sure, uh, for, for both myself and I understand, uh, and for the public. So I, I think you're saying, uh, two things. One is we are currently undergoing a districting process to draw four council districts. Through this process, should the city council ever decide to go to five districts, is there a way or would it be advantageous to, through this process, draw four districts and draw five districts as a way to potentially save on time and, and resources should that change be made? Uh, question two, I, I, I believe, is what is the precise process to come to the conclusion that five districts is more compliant with the CVRA, the California Holding Rights Act, than four districts? Is that, is that, is that a fair summary of, of the su- the two components of your question? Perfectly. We'll take it the latter one. Um, I think we need to investigate that more versus providing on-the-spot response to that. Certainly looking into, as Kristen Partt said, uh, Measure F from nineteen seventy-seven and how that was placed on the ballot and what that means, uh, with respect to compliance of the California Voting Ri- Rights Act. We can look into that and provide the, the council with a clear understanding of, as we're going through this process, should the city council desire to look or to adopt five districts? Can that be done through this process? Uh, and, and/or because of how Measure F was adopted, it has to go back to the voters. I think if that's a question, we can do the work and provide a, a, a clear answer to the council on that question. With respect to the other question, which is, we're drawing four maps. Uh, would it save time and money to, to draw five maps through this process? Um, potentially? Uh, but I think that's also related to the, to the, to the, to the first question because it would only be save resources if we were converting to five districts now. Because if you convert to five districts later, be it November twenty-fourth, then you have to draw your maps based on the data that's available at that point. And so I don't know that converting this process from a four district process to a five district process to save on resources would, would be advantageous. to save on resources would be advantageous if that thing happened later. And so for both of those questions, though, I think if that's a question that the council wants us to delve deeper into, we can do that to provide clarity on that. It's just important to note that we launched this process looking at four districts. But if there's a, if there's a desire to delve further into, is there a possibility through this process to look at five districts? We can certainly do that work and bring that information back to the city council.
Yeah, or, I mean, is it, is it a quote-unquote safer? Not to, it's so simple, but to select five districts now and have the five districts move forward? We had at one time discussed five districts. We had also talked about, because if I remember the conversation correctly around the mayoral issue, we all agreed that nobody wanted to spend much, needed city money on a special election. And that if this item would go to the voters, which it needed to, it would have to go next year. And that would align with the districting. And so not putting the cart before the horse, but really wanting to plan this out. Because what I don't want is I don't want to get to next year and now we're not going to move forward on any potential changes on the districting. Now we're going to be spending another $100,000 for a new, for a new district map. So I think the conversation had always been that we were taking these into consideration as we moved along. And I don't want to cost the city more money, you know, for poor planning on our part up in front, at the front end of the project.
I think that makes perfect sense. I would just put a pause on it until we know what is legally possible. I certainly wouldn't want to engage your residents in your community on, you know, concurrently thinking about, you know, here's the maps of four, here's the maps of five, unless we're sure that there is a way forward with the five prior to the November 2022 election. So we circle back on that as soon as possible.
Yeah. And to the mayor, just in response to Councilmember Mason's question on timing, the city decided in 2020 to convert to district elections in November 22. And so now we're beginning that work. The conversation that occurred earlier in this year was can the city hold a special election timed with the gubernatorial recall to put the question of a directly elected mayor before the voters? We were preempted from doing that due to how the recall process unfolded and our ability to put something on the ballot. We did receive a call from the county that putting a special, holding a special election just for the city of San Bruno would cost approximately $500,000. And the decision at that time was to not move forward due to the cost. And so we then proceeded with the district elections process under the current format as per Measure F, directly elected mayor for council districts. The question that's being asked now is, is there a way through this process to look at five districts? And should there be a map for five districts created, is there a way to do that conversion prior to the November 2022 election so that it is five districts, not four, that are created? And that's the question that, should council want to investigate that issue, we will certainly investigate it and bring back information to the city council.
Yeah, I think the second part is definitely new. I don't, I don't know if the first part's new, but the second part, I think, is new, given that it sounds like there's a process associated to looking into at a later time. And I think they really should run parallel tracks. So that would be my thoughts on that. And then just another question, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. But it's just on the, on the jail, the San Bruno jail. So San Bruno jail has quite, has the population in there as well. And I am curious to know how the jail fits into the districting. You know, I haven't even, I don't think, I might, I'm sorry, City Manager, I'm putting you on the spot, but are they included in the census as residents of San Bruno? And how are they a part of this entire districting process?
Yeah, no, it's actually a great question. When we're talking about California's adjustment, we are talking about California adjusting our state prison inmates and those incarcerated in federal prisons. Folks who are in jail, in county jail, are usually, they're, of course, you know, realignment, but usually they're there for less than a year and they are not counted there at the jail. They are counted at their place of residence. So if that place of residence is in San Bruno, then yes, will be counted there. If they're currently incarcerated in the jail, but their home address is elsewhere, they will be counted at that home address. That is my understanding.
Can we just confirm that with the city, maybe city attorney?
Yes, I'll look at that and we'll report back, absolutely.
I believe Councilmember Mason has concluded, thank you. Councilmember Hamilton, then?
So I came into this meeting with similar questions about how, how this process works along with the potential for rotating there. So I won't cover that ground again because it was just covered. But I do have one, one question regarding if that question were to be addressed after the '22 election, it was mentioned that we would have to go back and use fresh data. I thought the census was done every 10 years. What fresh data would be available? Are we talking about all that other stuff like potentially residents coming, saying that there's a particular community that they want to keep together or whatever? Is it that non-population-based data that would force a, go back to the data again?
Two things. So the census data you would be required to use if you're doing this at any point again in the next decade, the total population numbers you're going to use for population balance will be the 2020 census. However, the U.S. Census Bureau does an annual survey called the American Community Survey. And that is where we, they, what they do with that is they combine it into like a five-year rolling data set. So if you did this two years from now, there would be some perhaps minor changes to the demographic data in the sense of where your citizen voting age, population, race, ethnicity, renters, homeowners, all of that extra stuff that comes from the American Community Survey, that is updated on an annual basis. However, for the purposes of drawing the district boundaries to be equal in population size, that number will not change until after '23.
Understood, okay, thank you. I would concur with Councilmember Mason that trying to avoid going through this whole process twice, not just, not just for the expense, but for the effort, for the, for the community to redraw everything and doing everything, you know, doing the entire process again a year from now or further is not ideal. And if there's a way that we can figure out how to get all that data now and figure a path forward, given, given what the previous direction has been, I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina? You're on mute, Marty.
Thank you for that, I apologize. Just for the record, I do agree with Councilwoman Mason and Councilman Hamilton. If there was a way that we could proceed and not have those expenditures in the future, I'm in favor of that, so I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Ms. Parks, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar?
All right, I was, I was playing around with the map. I got a little distracted, but I just had a quick question about the maps themselves. And it's, I see that they were drawn with what looks to be some census tracts, some census tract borders, and they got the numbers in there. And it seems like the city pretty well divides. I mean, if you were just sort of a quarter it out, it would kind of give us our 10,000. So it seems like a pretty even distribution of voters across the city. And looking at the map, so if we were to try to do something more creative with this, can we assume that there is a pretty uniform distribution of voters across all of the blocks within those census tracts? Would that be a fair something now?
No, so what you're looking at, so the census counts all the way down to the block level. And if you're looking at those paper maps, you know, we can't print on a letter-sized piece of paper every single census block, right? But there is large variance, as you can imagine, right? As there are parts of the city with apartment buildings and parts of the city with single-family homes and parts of the city with nobody at all. So that is very block by block. What you're looking at are collections of city, of blocks, right? For the most part here, these are collections of multiple blocks. The blocks tend to follow the streets. So when you can see where the street, but not, not 100% of the time, right? Maybe like 80% of the time, they follow the streets perfectly. So each of these population units that NDC has drawn, we draw them in a way that tries to make it easier for the public to get an, you know, an estimate. But certainly the public here, they don't have to draw based on these population unit lines. They do follow census blocks, but keep in mind that each of these units here is a collection of census blocks and the number of voters. Oh, well, the population, right, we're not looking here at the number of voters. But the population does vary from block to block, in some areas quite significantly. Once the online tool is launched, you'll be able to drill all the way down to the block level. Again, I'm crossing my fingers of facts this week. We'll see, but yeah, you'll be able to drill all the way down to that block level so that you can, you can fine-tune your district map to the smallest possible, you know, geographic unit, which is a census block.
Yeah, that was my next question, is then will the tool allow us to do that? And then the tool, I imagine, will also give us a total for an area that we define so that we know that we're approximating.
Exactly. It automatically calculates it for you. The tool that you're getting, District Art, is my favorite tool. It's very, very easy, no account is required, no login. You literally will point and click to select and you can point and click to deselect. And it will automatically give you information. So I generally tell folks, you know, you can use Google Maps, you can probably use this tool. And, you know, keeping in mind that, for instance, what you see here at the cemetery with, with, I don't know why there's 25 residents in it. I was trying to figure that out by looking at the satellite view and I'm going to have to dig back in. That's one entire census block. So I don't know if that 25 people there is differential privacy or if they're on the boundaries there. But that is a whole block, right?
Right. And notice the high school, too, has 456, but it also includes a little piece of the neighborhood that's adjacent to it. So it's kind of an interesting geography there. Okay. And so my other question, too, is looking at the, at the population maps, the ones that were focused on, the ethnic distributions. And it really doesn't look like, just based on those maps, I would say that there is no one geographical area that we could identify that is somehow disadvantaged in the, in terms of setting up a voting district. And even if you look at the concentration of Hispanics or Spanish-speaking people, they might be in an area, but they're such a small portion of that area that their vote still would possibly be diluted within a district unless you get very granular. So I'm wondering, after going through this exercise, is there still a potential that somebody could raise an issue that even with the districts, they're not granular enough and that we're not meeting the letter of the law, which is to really provide those people with equal access?
Yeah, well, there's always, you know, we can't prevent people from trying to bring lawsuits. However, what we are experts in doing is creating maps that are defensible in court, right? And NDC of, for the three or four decades we've been doing, we've never had a court strike down any of the maps that we have drawn for our clients. So that's a good thing. And we are very mindful of what, of how, you know, what the requirements are in terms of, you know, if there is a possibility to draw a majority-minority district, making sure that that is something that's considered. But also if there is a concentration of, for instance, Spanish-speaking folks in the area, that we're not splitting them up and, you know, having them be in three different districts that they really can't organize as a community together. And that's really part of, the heart of the discussion of community of interest is, a community may want to organize. They may want to organize for the betterment of their area or their neighborhood. And we want them to have the opportunity to do so effectively.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Mason?
Those were great questions from Councilmember Salazar. I think just along those questions, have you seen in the work you've already done in other cities an actual change in representation after districting?
Yes, yes. There often is a change in representation after districting, yes. I don't, I don't have a quantification of that, but some cases, yes, and some cases, no. But yeah, oftentimes, yes. Particularly when you are drawing majority-minority districts, oftentimes you do see a minority member elected.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think it just, it's your, it's like you're enhancing the opportunities for people to run because it is a lot less, right? You're, you have less population, you have less population that you have to pay for flyers and such. But I do get concerned about the unanticipated consequences of that if there aren't other measures taken to ensure that there's opportunities still for individuals to run, you know, and representation. And so I think, you know, we'll have to see how this plays out as we move forward here in San Bruno. Thank you.
Yeah, and I always tell my clients that, you know, when I'm teaching political science, I tell my students that, you know, drawing these district boundaries is only one, one small part of the representation puzzle, right? Voters also have to, you know, we look at citizen voting age population, but you have to make sure that those eligible voters are registered to vote and turn out to vote and that you have people running for office. So, you know, we need to ask folks that in our community that we think would make good leaders, we need to ask them to run for office. We know that women and people of color and minorities often don't run unless someone asks them. So please ask people to run for office. Ensure that your friends, family, and neighbors are registered to vote and turn out to vote, right? All of that is beyond the scope of what I can do for you as your topographer.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further hands, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening and thanks. Sorry, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, before we leave, I just wanted to confirm city council direction because I do think I heard three councilmembers request that the city look into a five-district map option in its relation to Measure F. And is there the ability through this process for the city council to consider five-district maps? And in the comments, I heard a majority of councilmembers say that. I just want to confirm that because staff will take that as direction. In addition, the other thing, request that was made was for the city attorney to clarify how the jail population is counted for these maps. And so I just want to confirm from the city council that that's clear directions and the two takeaways from the statement.
I would concur with your takeaways and I'm not seeing anybody else saying otherwise.
One addition is that for the maps and also for the census, how they're counted. Thank you.
Okay, did that last caveat, City Manager, make sense or okay?
Yeah, I think Councilwoman Mason... Yeah, I think Councilwoman Mason was referring to, by the "them," the jail population for both the maps and the census, how they're counted.
Okay, you're correct. Okay, looks like there's direction, and thank you for this public hearing. Appreciate our folks that gave the presentation again, we appreciate it, and thank you to staff. And so with that, being no further business, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on October 26, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Everybody, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Rick, I'm going to recuse myself, and, oh, not recuse, but abstain from the minutes, just so you know that, as chair. I was not at the last meeting.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So Mary, while we're waiting to start, this week was my oldest son's 40th birthday.
That's a milestone.
So I...
It's a bigger milestone, I think, for the parents than a child.
Indeed. So for his birthday, I gave him a cigar that was one of the original cigars that I passed out when he was born, so I gave him a 40-year-old cigar. So, I gave him a forty-year-old cigar.
What a clever gift. When my son turned fifty, he lives in Australia, so I posted on Facebook some historical things from early on, you know, like coming home from the hospital, all the way to his Montana, Joe Montana's outfits and his six, you know, the number sixteen, all the earrings that I still have of his. It was really fun to do that. So, a parent, every year, I think more about your child's birthday, and those milestones are a big deal. Congratulations.
Thank you. Of course, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Hey, it took me a moment to figure out the new agenda link and everything.
That's why I was calling earlier.
Yeah, I was on a different teleconference at the time. It's just been one thing after another today.
One way.
You know, we get the packet. Sometimes we get it from Vicki's. We get it from different sources, but it's not always the same each week. So, you have to sort of search a little bit. And this time I had to go on the city website, go to the government section and download it because I didn't see it in any of your emails. So, I think I'm just gonna make that a practice. I'm not, you know, I really like when I get it, but it's just as easy to go on the website.
So, Michael, how many do we need this evening to start the meeting? Because there's four of us.
I think we're, I think we're good. We're good for quorum.
Yeah, quorum is usually half of the group rounded up.
Plus what?
There's five of you present, Chair Beasote, so I think you can get started.
Okay. So, with that, good evening, and welcome to the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. For everyone attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please note that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for an item on the agenda, there's two options. For those of you using online Zoom, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the touchscreen. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. If you're joining us by telephone, you may address the commission by pressing star nine. When it is your turn to speak, you will be muted and given three minutes to address the commission. Please note that you may only speak once per agenda item. And, Michael, would you give us a hand-taking roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Morgan, absent. Commissioner Madden, here. Commissioner Lethen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Here.
And Chair Beasate.
Here.
All right. And Commissioner Johnson, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Gladly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
For what?
With that, we'll move on to item one, which is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first is September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Harmon.
Well, I'll move that we approve the minutes. I skimmed them. They seemed fine.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. Anyone with a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, or, Michael, is it roll call for this?
Uh, for minutes, sure, we can do a roll call. Commissioner Morgan, excused. Commissioner Madden, uh, yes. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
Aye. So, that brings us to September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a motion for those minutes? Anyone?
All motion, we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second for the September twenty-one minutes. Roll call vote again, please. Michael?
Hey. Commissioner Morgan, excused. Commissioner Madden. I'll abstain. I was not present. Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
I'll also abstain. I was not present.
Okay. Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
Aye. Thank you.
Very good.
All right. So, we'll move on to item two, for public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone watching from home that would like to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. Do we have anyone in the audience with their hands raised or looking to speak with? Michael, can you see anyone on your side?
Uh, no.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item three, conflicts of interest. Anyone have a conflict this evening? No? Okay. Then we will move on to item four, public hearings. Twenty-two thirty, Fleetwood. And this is, staff is recommending we continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Anyone have comments or continue?
I move that we continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right, we have a motion, second. And when Michael's done with his call, he can help us with the roll call vote, please. Michael Smith, you're here with us. I see you on the screen. Would you be so kind as to help us with a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna pause right here for a moment. I think he might be checking on the last motion you guys made, just to make sure. So, we'll wait to hear from Michael right now.
That was Commissioner Morgan having trouble with the link. Okay. So, I apologize. Where were we?
Uh, we were on item four A, and we were looking at staff recommendation to continue to November sixteenth.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Would you give us a hand with the roll call vote, please?
Uh, certainly. Commissioner Morgan, coming soon, hopefully. Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
Aye. All right. So, with that, we'll move on to item B, which is seventeen twenty-three Hickory. And this is also a staff recommendation to continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, anyone might want to make a comment or a motion?
Okay, like a motion to continue it, if that's what they want.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Michael, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Morgan, coming soon. Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo, excused. Commissioner, Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So, that takes us to item five A, which is a study session regarding recent housing law updates and the submitted SB thirty-five intensity bonus project overview.
Okay. Let's see. Hopefully, you can, you're able to see my screen? No.
Yes.
Okay, great. Oh, good evening, commissioners. This item is similar to the presentation that Pamela did to the city council last evening on the new state laws plus some existing state laws. And it's always good to, even if you're familiar with some of the, some of the housing laws, it's always good, you know, to have refreshers as well. So, we'll cover, tonight, we'll cover some, a couple of the new laws plus some of the existing laws. And I'll also be explaining some of the, some of the things, some of the types of inquiries that we're receiving and the types of projects that may be coming through that are utilizing some of these state laws. So, let's see. I can get, there we go. So, as I mentioned, well, the objective is to provide an overview this evening. And then, and an explanation of how these laws can restrict some of the ability of the city to regulate certain projects. So, our agenda, the agenda tonight includes some background. We'll talk about SB nine, SB ten, accessory dwelling units, SB thirty-five, which is expedited processing, the Housing Accountability Act, SB three thirty, state density bonus law, and finally concluding with any questions that you have. Uh, so, um, the, as you know, the cities and municipalities, including San Bruno, are able to regulate development and implement development standards through the general plan, through zoning, through voter approval. Also, in San Bruno's case, you have the Transit Corridors Plan, which is a plan for mixed-use development along San Bruno's corridors. And that document has very specific standards about development and development massing and so forth. And these laws, of course, strike a balance between non-existing development while also basically maintaining the quality of life for the community. The new state laws, however, supersede some of these local regulations. They serve to streamline and expedite review processes. They limit the applicability of zoning in some cases, and they waive certain development standards, such as parking height setbacks and so forth. And again, the aim of the state laws is to increase production of housing. So, with the overview of the housing laws, we'll start with Senate Bill nine. And Senate Bill nine was just recently adopted into law. Governor Newsom signed this on September sixteenth, and it'll take effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. The legislation allows for single-family owned lots, anywhere within a jurisdiction, to have up to four units. This includes all the units types, such as duplex, an accessory dwelling unit, a junior accessory dwelling unit, as permitted by the existing ADU laws. It will prohibit any discretionary review. That means any type of review by the ARC, the Planning Commission or the city council. And review can only through a building permit based on standards that the city has in place. So, the one that's, I think, the most concerning is that this law would allow for the subdivision of residential property into two lots, each with a minimum of twelve hundred square feet. And each, so you could build a duplex structure on each of the newly created lots. There is a provision in the law that states that if you are subdividing, you have to subdivide roughly proportionate to the size of the lot, based on a maximum forty, sixty percent split. So, you can do fifty-fifty, forty-sixty, or anything in between, but you can't do, take twenty percent of the lot area and then leave eighty percent. So, so it's twelve hundred square feet is the minimum, and then the roughly proportional split. This will preempt any city zoning standards and apply to most residential neighborhoods across the state. And so, this, basically, the jurisdiction has to allow units of at least eight hundred square feet in size. For parking, it prohibits off-street parking requirements to no more than one parking space per unit. That's all that can be required. If the property is located within a half a mile of high-quality transit, in San Bruno's case, the Samtrans bus lines on El Camino Real, Caltrain, or Bart, or car-share vehicle is available within a block, no street, no street parking spaces would be required for units. And it does, the law does encourage new dwelling units to be compatible with existing neighborhood-scale homes, meaning modifications to property to be in keeping with the appearance of the neighborhood. Um, I hope that this, these graphics are not meant to alarm you, and I think they may be, you know, go a bit far. But the one on the left, you can see, shows an existing single-family residential neighborhood. And then, the diagram below shows potential development under SB nine. I think that the mass, the boxes and the massing that are showing is a bit aggressive and probably overdone, but it, you know, I think it's just designed to help convey what, you know, visually what might happen. The next image, the before and after SB nine, so there are potentially a number of ways individuals could subdivide their lots, either with, you know, subdividing off the back of a lot with some sort of an easement, or splitting the lot into directly from the street. You know, so those are some of the, some of the possible ways people might use this law. However, it's worth noting that some research has been done by the Turner Center in Berkeley, looking at, you know, all of the lots within the state, and also looking at larger cities, including San Bruno. And they, and basically, you know, they're looking at it from an economic standpoint, whether, you know, the cost and value of adding a unit versus what it can be, you know, rented for, you know, whether that makes sense. And they see that, you know, for San Bruno, that would mean no more than five hundred of these types of units during the life of the law. Our staff's feeling is that most homeowners who are interested in having an additional unit on the property would be looking more at the ADU or the junior ADU option rather than subdividing their property. Subdivision requires, you know, hiring an engineer and a lot of additional costs that most homeowners are probably not interested in pursuing, and then they have to go through a subdivision process with the city. In addition to that, one of the, the, one of the problems that we see with the law is that it creates, or can create, a number of building code conflicts. So, for example, the building code for residential construction requires that you maintain a five-foot setback from any openings, such as doors, windows, along a building. And if you go closer than that, those openings have to be fire-rated, you know, or they have to be eliminated. So, and for residential homes, you need ingress and egress. So, and for residential homes, you need ingress and egress out of windows and around the perimeter of a structure. So subdivision, I think, people will find, great, will create, that will create a lot of conflicts in these types of, of structures. So time, time will tell how this will play out. But again, you know, we feel that the, that most people are going to go for ADUs and junior ADUs. Senate Bill ten is the, is also another bill that Governor Newsom signed into law, and also takes effect January first, twenty twenty-two. This law is, is optional for cities, so it's not, it's, it's a tool for cities who wish to increase single-family residential zoning intensity close to transit. So what it does is it exempts rezonings of single-family lots to small, multifamily housing structures of up to ten units, you know, within close proximity of transit. So the act, the act of rezoning would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So it just provides a tool for cities that want to do that. So there's no, there's no requirement that, that cities do this, or, you know, or, you know, take on these types of rezonings unless they really want to. So this is kind of a, a summer, summer slide, again, not to, not to, not to concern, hopefully scare you too much. It just tries to show how you, you know, you could have a, a number of, if you did an SB ten rezoning of a residential neighborhood close to transit, and then with the effects of SB nine, you know, the picture on the right shows what a kind of a mixture neighborhood could look like, you know, in that situation. Just, this, the, you know, the ADU laws have been in effect for a number of years, and were recently updated in twenty twenty, and then the city of San Bruno adopted the, essentially the state law for accessory dwelling units. And so it allows for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, which are within a structure, to be built in, in a jurisdiction. So within San Bruno, prior to the law change, I think the city was averaging about ten to thirteen accessory dwelling units. In twenty twenty, the city experienced this spike in ADU production. There were forty-three units created, and then in twenty twenty-one, and we're not even done with the year yet, it's an additional forty-three applications that we've received. And again, those are ministerial, so they're processed by just a billing permit, and, you know, so those, the planning, the Architecture View Committee or the Planning Commission don't, don't end up seeing those, those applications. And just a reminder that the accessory dwelling units can be detached, attached, interior, or also be a conversion of a garage space or other existing space. So Senate Bill thirty-five is a streamlined affordable housing law. It was enacted in twenty seventeen and became acted, effective in January first of twenty eighteen. It allows eligible residential projects to be processed ministerially, meaning without a review by decision-making bodies. In urbanized areas where cities did not produce enough housing to meet their regional housing needs assessment numbers in the current housing cycle. So for San, San Bruno, you know, did not meet its current RENA allocation by no fault of the cities, you know, again, the cities are only required to designate properties for housing development within the, the housing element cycle, and then it's up to the, you know, basically, private developers and the development community to come forward to develop those sites. So, but, you know, be that what it is, you know, most, most jurisdictions in the state are in the same situation, meaning that they have to basically accept these SB thirty-five type of projects. So these projects can only be reviewed by what are called objective design standards. Those are any standards that the city has in place at the time the application is made. In the case of San Bruno, the, the city is fortunate to have a transit corridor-specific plan, which is the location of where many of these types of applications may be made. Time will tell how, how, how it plays out. But anyway, that's, that's the basis of Senate Bill thirty-five. There are some timeframes within the law where jurisdictions have essentially six days to review the, the application for their, these objective design standards, and, and then another thirty days to basically review the application if it's under a hundred and fifty dwelling units. And, you know, so that, so there's some very tight timeframes here. And I, and also no parking, as mentioned, as shown in the slide, if it's, if the project's within a half-mile of transit. So the Housing Accountability Act and Senate Bill three thirty were enacted into law in twenty seventeen and amended in twenty twenty-one, and it applies to any, any developments of two or more units, and a number of other type of, types, types of residential developments. And, I'm sorry, I apologize here, my cursor's a little too, too, too easy to move here. So it, it, it affects the jurisdiction's ability to approve and, or disapprove development, and the only standard is whether, that can be applied is whether the jurisdiction can prove that the development will have an unavoidable impact on public health and safety. So, so as you can see, it was the kind of the five main points on the bottom of the slide, it lends the jurisdiction's ability to disprove projects, prevents jurisdictions from increasing fees after an application is submitted. There, there, it limits the number of public hearings to five, you know, in the case of jurisdictions that have multiple subcommittees, creates a permit streamlining process, and also prevents cities and counties from creating building limits, such as a, you know, a moratorium on the number of units that could be, could be built within a period. The State Density Bonus Law has, has been, been used, is starting to be used more and more by jurisdictions. And the way it works is that a developer can exceed the maximum density within a, a local jurisdiction's plan, and they can do so, they can get more units based on the, the level of, the number of affordable units and the, and the, the depth of the affordability. So, and it's based on a sliding scale. And there were recent amendments to the, to the density bonus law in twenty twenty that even provide greater incentives for developers, or more, more units for developers up to eighty percent, an eighty percent density bonus for certain types of one-hundred percent affordable projects, and, and including senior housing projects. So that's a significant difference from what local jurisdictions zoning and development standards would allow, so that's, that's significant. In the case, I, I think I'll make it, just make a comment that's pertinent to San Bruno. So under our Transit Corridors Plan, we have a height limit of seventy feet for the transit or in a development zone along El Camino, for example, and San Bruno Avenue. And the, there, there is no density maximum if the lot's more than twenty thousand square feet. So what, so, so the developer may, may, may not approach the city if they are developing one of those, in one of those areas, to actually get more units. In some jurisdictions, there's a, there's a density limit on the number of units. But what they may do instead is just ask for what are called incentives and concessions from various zoning standards. They may also ask for waivers or reductions of development standards or a reduced parking ratio. However, parking, some types of parking standards are, like, for example, if you're close to, to transit, cities are already limited to how many parking spaces they can require in those situations, and, you know, again, it's, it's, would be up to the city to, you know, to, to demonstrate that there's a health, safety, welfare impact to the project if, if there is a, you know, when, when one of these concessions is asked for or waivers. Okay, I know I've provided you with an immense amount of information, and so, you know, would be happy to open it up for any questions you have. And I don't know if we've got anyone from the public present at this time. I see Commissioner, or Commissioner Maden's hand was raised?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The height limit. A lot of buildings I've worked on, because they're near airports, they had a height limit that superseded anything that a particular city had. Is there anything like that, being, you know, so close to SFO, that would supersede any of these height exceeding provisions that you talked about?
That's a very good question. No, there, you cannot exceed a, you know, have a established height, height limit.
Do you know how far that extends? Is it just one-on-one, or is it further into the city?
Well, the, there's a conical surface that extends up from the runways, so there's, you know, so the height, the allowed height varies depending, you know, how close you are to the airport. The other, the other component is the noise contour, so, you know, portions of town are within the seventy to seventy-five decibel noise contour, so based on the Airport Land Use Commission standards and plan, residential's an incompatible use. However, the city could still approve housing in those areas with sound, you know, mitigation and an override of the ALUC. So developers can still propose projects within those areas, however, there's those additional hurdles. But, but the height limit cannot, that conical surface cannot be exceeded.
Is there a, a map maybe in the future, a future meeting you could present us showing where that kind of?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we have, we have, yeah, we have the maps from the airport plan.
Okay. And then I had a question on Slide seven and Slide nine, I just want to make sure I'm understanding right.
Okay, let me, I guess I could go back to, if I can find it.
Yeah, so, the right-hand side, you've got the before SB nine and after SB nine, and obviously the buildings are different, but the orange one on the right also shows a whole bunch of cars, where the other one doesn't. Was there anything particular why we're doing that, other than, I, I know you mentioned the parking, off-site parking or something, is, those restrictions have been lax, but is there anything in there about, like, only people who live in these lots should be able to park their cars, there like a sticker program or something? Because I could see this getting really out of hand with so many different people living in a fifty-foot-wide lot with, you know, two or three cars in each lot, and, you know, could be a recipe for disaster. So, so I'm just wondering what, is there, am I, should I not be inferring something by the, the, the number of cars shown on the right, or?
So, so first, I'll, I'll start with a disclaimer, these graphics are not, you know, ones that we produced, there, there was that we found from other sources. I think the, the point is that, you know, you could definitely see additional, you know, you will, I'm sure you will see additional cars associated with these, with these types of units. Again, the state just restricts the fact that you can only require one covered or uncovered space per unit, so if someone does choose to build four units, they could satisfy their parking with a two-car garage, two-car driveway, or, or a tandem, you know, a tandem situation as well. So yes, you could see this. One, one thing to just mention is that the, you know, the city does have in its municipal code a, a, I guess, a, an allowance for residential parking permits, but that has, that would have to be initiated, you know, by a neighborhood to the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, to the City Council. So there is an, is a process to, you know, with the, with the majority of residents within a neighborhood to request residential parking permits. However, the, the difficult part of that is you cannot use those permits necessarily to restrict new residents from parking or having access to those permits. So, how, you know, getting, you know, putting a neighborhood under parking permits may not help solve the issue for existing residents. So, you know, again, these are things that the states, you know, doesn't allow jurisdictions to do.
Okay. One more on this slide, so there's a couple of lots on here where the original house, instead of splitting into two smaller houses, is just getting bigger. Are there any, are there any changes to what, you know, if he's making a single-family home larger, like, are the setback requirements all the same? I know we have a bunch of rules. Almost everything that comes to the Planning Commission is because someone's enlarging their house fifty percent more than what it is now. Seems like that's pretty much the only type of project we'd be reviewing from now on. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, so, you know, again, with the allowance for ADUs and junior ADUs, that You know, that, that basically only require building permits and, and they have to be allowed and permitted by the jurisdiction. You know, we can't, you know, review them against the, the city's residential time guidelines and, and floor area requirements. And I know the ARC just recently reviewed a home that had an internal. Crawl space that was not used as habitable space, however. You know, in those types of situations, if the homeowner comes in with a permit for a junior ADU. Within the footprint of the building, you know, we're required to issue the permit, so. The, you know, so floor area issue. You know, again, some of these laws I think will. Will kind of somewhat bypass some of the city's floor area restrictions or reviews related to additional floor area.
Right, I guess what I meant is that. All, if you just want to make your house bigger and not put an ADU or junior ADU, all the same rules that we've been following still apply, correct?
Yes, correct, correct.
So the potential for abuse is for someone to put a junior ADU or attach ADU. Get everything approved and then knock down some walls and make it just part of their house, correct? Unless someone wheels on them. Okay, all right, on slide nine. Go that one. So this, these lots with ten-unit apartments. In red, next to an existing house that is not altered in any way. This is really the law, I mean, this could ruin neighborhoods, I mean.
Yeah, so. So, as I mentioned, SB ten is, is not required by jurisdictions. It's only, it only provides a tool for environmental reviews. Process of a zone change, so if, if jurisdictions desire to rezone residential, single-family residential neighborhoods close to transit. Or small apartment buildings, they, the jurisdiction can. Can basically set the rules for that type of rezoning, so it doesn't need to be for ten units. If, if, if the jurisdiction wants to say allow for five units or six units. And within that area and rezone an area. The, the process of, of rezoning is, would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So, all, all it's doing is it's, it's, it's removing a hurdle in the rezoning process for jurisdictions that want to do this. But it's, again, it's not required.
Okay, that's good, because I could see this crushing property values. Yeah, that's all I got, thank you.
Arus, I see your hand is up, you're the next in line.
Yeah, I, I'm a little disappointed in the, the images that are sourced from these slides, because they're from groups that were lobbying against the laws and they're actively misinformational. I mean, the SB ten one in particular, it being a completely opt-in process. You know, if you don't want to zone for ten-unit apartments in a neighborhood, then don't zone for that. It's, it's giving cities a tool that actually gives them more flexibility, not less. On the height limits, I know we have some, you know, five, six-story apartments down in Burlingame at a comparable distance from the airport. I mean, I don't know if you do know offhand, but I was curious to the answer to Commissioner Madden's question, like. Are we anywhere close to hitting that surface, my understanding is we're probably not anywhere but maybe in the northeast corner of the city.
Yeah, I, we'd have to, to check, to check that.
Okay, but yeah, my, my back of the envelope, my understanding is that even with, I mean, whatever bonuses, whatever maximum you could propose, like. That we're nowhere near hitting that surface and it's not going to be relevant. On the SB thirty-five topic, I did just, I mean. If, if you look at what we proposed to do in the, the Transit Orders Plan, I think you would probably agree with, again, a little back of the envelope math. That if we had actually built out the transit corridor to the density we said we wanted to. Whatever that was, six, seven, eight years ago, we would not be behind on our arena numbers and we would not be subject to SB thirty-five, would you generally agree with that?
Yes, cause the, yeah, the build-out I believe is about a hundred units of the, from the. Transit corridor plan and our, and the, yeah, it would have, it would have essentially, you know. Yeah, depending on the level of affordability.
It would have, yeah, I mean, again, fair, depending on the inclusion of VI units and so on, but the, the raw number of units is more than that. And so I, I think, you know. I'm not super pleased to see us lose discretion, but there is a question of how we use our discretion. I believe the density bonus law, I don't know if you know the history of this, I think my understanding is that it's based in a fairly successful San Diego program. That was sort of piloted down in SoCal and they, it was adopted at the state level because. San Diego was showing better progress on producing affordable units compared to LA and San Francisco and Sacramento, that that's sort of the. I don't know if you're. Sort of familiar with any of that history or?
No, I apologize, I don't have the history.
But my understanding is there were, there was evidence for this being an effective way to, to help produce the affordable units that I think everybody agrees we need.
And I, and I, I, one thing I did want to include in my presentation, but it is, since the city of San Bruno has a fifteen percent affordable requirement. You know, built into the code, you know, so developers have to provide those units. So I think that's also going to incentivize that density, naturally incentivize density bonuses, since they can basically, basically. You know, offset the cost of, of those units, you know, that they're already required to provide, so.
I think that's my last comment or something you maybe want to clarify. My understanding of the Housing Accountability Act, from what I have read. So I think the, probably the most notorious application of the Housing Accountability Act is the saga that was chronicled in the New York Times about the terraces of Lafayette. In which the city. And developer had agreed to downscale a project, the developer basically didn't want the headache and attempted to. Agree to downsize a project that had been proposed that met all of the objective standards that was within the zoning. And the Housing Accountability Act lawsuit was brought on behalf of the potential tenants of the project, not on behalf of the developer. That even though the developer wanted to make the concession. A private law firm can bring on behalf of the future tenants, a like, we would like this housing to exist because it will make our rent cheaper. And so it's important to remember that the Housing Accountability Act is not a tool of developers, it is a tool that the state of California has given to. Create a right of action on behalf of the people of California.
All right, Arus, did you have anything else or was that?
No, I just, I felt like it was important that we get some of these things clear.
Thank you. Okay, Mary, I see you have your hand up, Kelly had her hand up first, so if you wouldn't mind, Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, mine is fairly simple, Michael had mentioned the lifespan of the bill when talking about SB nine, and I didn't realize that there were. Lifespan's on bills, I just figured it was this magical thing that lasted forever, and I was wondering if, how that relates to SB nine and the other bills.
Yeah, and I, I apologize for the misunderstanding, so the bill itself doesn't, doesn't have, you know, it doesn't sunset, so it's, you know, good, good until it's amended. But the, the research that was done by the Turner Center. Was just projecting out, took, they, what they did is they took, you know, kind of all of the entire state of California. They first looked at all the feasible lots that may be feasible to the subdivision under SB nine, so that. Kind of brings the pool of, of lots down, so for San Bruno, it went from eighty-six hundred down to eighty-four hundred feasible. Type lots, and then they looked at market conditions, you know, you know, housing prices, construction prices and. You know, and then also kind of the. You know, how, how many people realistically would want to pursue something like this, so. The number, again, the number that was presented for San Bruno was, was five hundred, so that, that number just simply means that. You know, at, at the current time, you know, maybe up to five hundred of the eighty-six hundred residential lots. You know, may pursue some type of subdivision or addition of additional units and. You know, we've already seen, you know, well over a hundred ADUs, so again, what, and ADUs are probably much more attractive to the average homeowner. Than the SB nine process, so again, that's just. You know, that was just information that was produced by the, the Turner Center.
Great, thank you.
Was that it, Kelly?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Mary, please, if you would.
So, you know, so interesting to listen to all of this, because. Now, as a commissioner for a long time, there's a way, a culture and a training and knowledge we receive along the way and. Planning Commission institutes and going to them and how lay of land and progression, how all, all the planning goes with it. And so I can't help but think about this, it's just a whole new way of thinking and what communities will look like. And so trying to stay on a positive side to think about, okay, how can we plan accordingly and not just look at this? Project by project, but looking, you know, looking at this from a bigger picture and, and, and. It really, I mean, there's a huge change here and also our demographics, there was a time. I don't know specifically right now, but it was a time that it was an older population or, you know, a time that was very family oriented. There's just different trends that have happened over a lifetime, and so looking at this, what does this do? Does this bring in younger people, does this bring more aging population, what's going to take place? And so I'd like to think about this, to saying, okay, it's a law, we don't have a choice. So be able to think about it rather than from a negative point of view and thinking, okay, not in my backyard. And I just counted, because I own four commercial piece of property on Santa Inez. And, and my, my school building, it's a private school, has been there for seventy years, oh, actually. The school's been there seventy years, but nineteen sixty-two, and so I know that community, it was there forty-five years, living it every day. And there are nine streets, I counted them, nine streets that have such a huge mixture of apartment buildings, a variety of. Unique ways of, of living in that space and we knew you're coming, but it just, it came about. Along the way, and I, I hope that as this progresses, that we're not going to be doing this on a, on a application by application, but taking a look at. How do we want to develop this, and we have had these long conversations, I mean, I've been on the commission thirty-one years. And long conversations about Sammata Avenue, Schleets and different things being done, and yet we're not moving forward in the way. You know, the discussions have tried, tried to think about our different communities within our city, so. You know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a huge deal, it's a huge deal to think about this. And, and, and we don't have a choice, but we do have a choice. Of how we want to give a big, a bigger picture thought, study sessions, figuring things out. And maybe that isn't a choice, I really don't know that, you know, this is new to us, but I'd like to think about as they come up. You know, when I look at that slide seven and slide nine, I mean, they look, I can remember on Sneed Lane when it used to be nursery. A row of nursery, nursery places and it was all just buildings where there was a lot of greenery and. Landscape, you know, it was all just nurseries, and then there was the. The Orchid Place on, on Al Camino, I can't think of the name right now, but. And then we had a whole, whole development and that was done really well for that, a number of acres, and so just thinking about this, because. We're going to have wild up people, we're going to have people coming to meetings, we're, as commissioners, we're going to be hearing a lot. About not am I about the yard kind of thing, and since we don't have a choice, how can we make it so it is? We're walking forward, moving forward as a community to make these things happen, you know, I, I, one of the slides talked about affordability, it talked about. Just different ways of putting things together, but when I see those slides seven and nine, I grew up in the, in the mission, my husband. Grew up in, in Hunter's Point's project area and we were across different projects, we saw what happens when there's massive kinds of things. You know, it's a different era, a different timing, and I'm not at all discriminating, but I'm pointing out the fact, masses of the people create a different energy. And so to be sure that we have community parks, different things taking place, so it's bringing a community together. Versus just plopping, you know, the, to me, this looked like barracks, you know, it looked like, and I know you got these slides, they're not, they're not what's planned. But they, and also the other thing that I saw was, we have been trained to look at much more greenery, much more, you know, percentage of, of. You know, permeable space, and all kinds of things to make an environment look much more curb appeal, attractive, sustainable. All those types of things, and the other slide showed a tremendous amount of reduction in, in, in that greenery, that landscaping. So I, I just think that if we start taking these projects one by one, we're going to end up with a bunch of chopped up kinds of stuff. And so I'd like to be sure that it's a community, the city of San Bruno community, the city with a heart, that we're really thinking about this from a bigger picture point of view. The thought of, of not doing it with some, you know, and our, you know, commission changes and takes place. I don't think anyone would be a guest saying, let's look at this, a livable place together and. It's huge, I think this is a huge change in a way of living in our community. And we are changing, life is different than it was, you know, I, I'm old enough to be able to speak to those kinds of things. And I can also see that it'd be a great, a great opportunity to create wonderful spaces for children. You, when you start having massive places like this, you start having what feels like unsafe conditions. And then you're starting to hibernate in houses, children are unable to play outside, you start to change your, your, your city, your communities, so I think that. From a conscious, you know, being conscious in this process, I can't be unconscionable in doing, in not doing something without giving it. Some big picture planning, so anyway, that's what I have to say and I, I love change, but I love change with good thought, with planning. And so some things I never want to change, but I think that change is inevitable and we can't ever stop. Building and changing, communities will do that, we can't, we will stagnate and we will become a town of no growth and. You know, I know what happens to towns of, of zero opportunity or people who just really look at, no, just flat, no. I'm, I'm excited to think about our city, it, it's exciting to think about children and families, because that's really, really what it's about. Children and families become senior citizens at one point, and anyway, that's what I have to say, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, was there anyone else here I thought would say before I speak? Anyone? Okay, so I have two items, Michael, the first was kind of a stupid question, but I, and I know I've asked it before, but are ADUs counted in arena numbers?
Yes, you can count them in, in the arena, so. So I, you know, as you know, San Bruno has a huge RENA number of sixty-one hundred fifty-five, I believe is the number, that we need to show locations for in the next, next housing element cycle. We're allowed to have used an average of the past several years. So, you know, so right now that average is looking like about forty-three or forty units than projected over an eight-year period, so, you know, possibly three hundred. We can, you know, count those, but, you know, and we're, we'll be, you know, next year, you know, after the first year, it's the year of the housing element. So you'll be getting, you know, we'll be having study sessions and other types of meetings surrounding the housing element and its preparation and the housing sites. And I think we may try to have, I think, we're going to probably start with the city council at the end of January with a, with a, a study session to kind of initiate the, the housing element process and the housing element sites. So, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm rambling as an answer to your question, so the answer is yes.
Okay. So the next question I have is, we're doing a lot of legislation here and pushing for development. What can we do to encourage people to build these things? I mean, we can legislate ten thousand or a hundred thousand units, but if no one's inspired to build these things, if it's not economically sensible for someone to build, they're not going to build it. So what can we do to make it easier for people or more incentivized for people to build these things?
Well, I, I think we're, the city's in the midst of a, is going to be in the midst of a very large building boom. Even, I've only been here a few weeks and the number of calls that I'm getting, you know, for housing sites and development of sites within the Transit Corridors Plan, you know, the things, the things are, are starting to, to happen. And I, you know, I would say that you, the community has done, I think, the best it can with, and I think it's a very good, really, all that really is needed is the Transit Corridor Plan. Because, you know, developers look for, look for plans like this that, that lay out the locations for development, you know, for them, so, you know, a lot of the, the new housing laws, you know, require that the, the property be zoned for, you know, have, have the ability to be zoned for, or have the ability to be built for residential or mixed use at densities that, you know, make sense for the developers. So I think, again, I think you're going to be seeing, you've opened the door through the Transit Corridor Plan.
Okay, thank you. And then the last part of my questions this evening is thinking about this from the staff's point of view. This is coming, what, January twenty-two? I believe. So I'm imagining myself standing behind the planning counter, having to answer questions from citizens about all of this. And I'm just wondering if we can take maybe some of tonight's program, that's a slideshow, or put together a webpage of some sort, so that we make it easier for staff, for them to be able to refer folks to the changes, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
You know, I'm just thinking about trying to make things easier for staff. I mean, there's probably going to be more than one or two people who go to the counter and want to know why there's something happening next door. And if you had some, you have something already created that you could just refer them to, it might save staff a lot of time.
No, that's a good point.
Cool, I have nothing else, does anyone else have anything before we move on?
Through the chair?
Please, Kelly.
Kind of in the spirit of what you were just talking about, I think it would be great to also maybe get ahead and, and help to educate people in our community about what these changes could potentially mean to us. And so when things, when developments do start trickling in that look different than people may expect, is how we can kind of educate them on, on why and how and what it means to them. I know that the city managers, what are these things called? Sorry, my vocabulary is gone now, I used the words already. His newsletters, his newsletters tend to cover some pertinent things, that might be a nice way, something of that, of that nature to, to reach folks about these kinds of changes. Maybe, actually, maybe the newspapers will do it. But, sorry, just in that same spirit, but I throw that out there.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Mary.
Since, since this is going, you know, starting in January, we know what the energy was when the Mills Park project was in place. And there were so, so many people that had said they hadn't even heard about it. And we had had many community meetings, we're going to have that happen. But because it is going to go into implement in January, then it's a very short timeframe. So I think part of it is that talking points for us would be really useful. If there's any opportunity to have ways that we could be, speak from the point of things that are not, that are beyond our control, since it is, it is a law. So that way we're at least on the same page about being able to get the message out there. We have our own opinions and our own feelings on that, but I think as, I think that it's always, it's my responsibility as a commissioner to try to convey as much information from a point of not creating energy that's going to stir up, but to educate. And, and then listen to people's feelings, listen to what's taking place and, and try to walk in that direction. Thank you.
Got it. Michael, maybe we could look at making that sort of information available to all the commissioners? So that, like Mary says, we feel when people approach us and talk to us, we have a, a resource to direct them to perhaps?
Yeah, I think we could, you know, just repackage, and I, you know, I apologize, we weren't able to give you a staff report for, for this information, we didn't want for the, the city council, but that only got approved late Friday afternoon by the city manager, so we weren't able to tell, to get it to you. But what we could do is just repackage a summary of, you know, of these laws for you, you know, just so you know that they, how they apply. You know, and I, I did want to mention too that we did, if you had, if you did either participate in the meeting, or I believe it may have been on the, in the city manager's newsletter, the city has received, we have received our first S B thirty-five application for a hundred thirty-six unit project at seven thirty-two through seven forty. Al Camino, it's the vacant lot to the south of the former Toyota building. So that, you know, is a, is a, is a project that, you know, staff will be processing. And again, it's, it's not subject to discretionary approval. So we're currently reviewing that internally. But there, there are some images on the website for that, for that project.
Thank you. Commissioner Harmon, I'm looking at the expression on your face, did you have something?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I did, I mean, since we were getting into that SB thirty-five project, not that our opinion is going to matter in the end because of how it's being processed, but, you know, the Mills Park project was shortly before my time on the commission. And I, I really believe that that was, you know, as acrimonious as it was, it's a better project for the input of the public and the planning commission. That I, I think, you know, some of the things like the way it's stepped down to protect light access on the backside towards the neighborhood, there's like a lot of features of it that are good. And if you compare what was the, the SB thirty-five project that was sort of held as a threat, I mean, my impression from talking to people is it was purely a threat and they didn't actually want to spend the money to fully do all the structural engineering to produce it, but that they wanted to hold it over the city to take their project finished. But because of how that saga went, we're now probably going to see more SB thirty-five projects. And unless we can get our act together to produce a housing element next year and actually start building things and meet our RENA number, that's, that's what we're going to get. We're going to have featureless boxes instead of, you know, attractive stepped down, you know, carved in public parks. So I was like, it's really important that we hit our numbers, basically. Because that, that's how we get to keep the discretion and how we get better projects where we have the input.
Thank you for your insight, Commissioner. Got it.
Um, yes, through the chair. All right, so you had just mentioned that by producing our numbers, that will help to, help to keep us out of the SB thirty-five types of thing, I'm sorry, can you elaborate on that? Is this SB thirty-five, is that when, when you're behind on your numbers, that kicks in?
Yeah, and so, yeah, so the way, the way this will probably play out is that, you know, we're, we are in the, you know, basically the last year of our current housing element with, with the lower, lower RENA number. So when our, the new housing element with this, the six thousand units, sixty-one hundred units, goes into effect in, you know, in twenty-twenty-two, we're going to have, you know, H C D, Housing and Community Development is going to be evaluating our progress towards meeting that number at, at some intervals along the eight-year cycle of, of that next housing element. So it may not be until we're four years into that cycle to see if we've produced, say, you know, over three thousand of those units before, you know, we may, that we may not then be, you know, you know, subject to SB thirty-five. So, you know, so that's, you know, that, you know, that's how, that's how it may play out. So it may be a very long time before, you know, before, there's, there's, and by then, there may be, you know, with the number of housing law changes that are occurring every year, you know, it may be a whole different kind of environment at that point. So it's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to say.
Okay, so we're in SB thirty-five territory now, and it may be
Correct.
at least midway through the next housing element's eight-year cycle, that we may actually see relief from that.
Yeah, so I would say at least the next five years will be accept, you know, will be needing to accept these projects. Thank you.
All right, anyone else before we move on? Commissioner Madden?
Yeah, like Commissioner Harmon, the Mills Park project was before my time on this commission. But, you know, what's stopping that developer from walking away? I don't want to do this anymore. Forming a new LLC, coming back and doing the massive original design. Is there anything stopping them from doing that?
I, you know, I don't know, I know that's a complicated project before my time as well. So I, you know, I don't have a, have a good answer on that one.
Okay. Through the chair. The thought, this, this thing could, you know, I hear everybody saying, but I think there's a lot of potential for, you know, like just in my neighborhood in Rollingwood, if people start splitting their lots up, I could see a lot of people just doing that, selling and leaving. And it's just not the same neighborhood. You know, it's, that's something we really correct, it seems, but I don't think it's going to make any people less angry just because we have some YouTube video, oh, it's out of our control, or here, go look at this on the website, there's nothing we can do. I think it's, it's just a kind of a blanket plan that is a little too, too general for my liking anyway. But it sounds like we're stuck with it and I could see a lot of abuse.
Thank you, Commissioner Madden, anybody else? Mary?
Yeah, you know, a number of years ago, on San Benito, right behind my school, there are houses that had split, there were split houses, split owners of those houses. And for the longest time, the developer was Dennis Jordan, and he, he developed the two houses and he, and he had hoped it would just, one family would move into them, couldn't sell them, couldn't sell them, so he split them. And there was a couple of them that are split that way. And it's just interesting to watch how they've worked it out. And going to Australia, my children live there, and going to Australia, there's a huge amount of that, going down a small little pathway and there's houses in that area. If it's built under those conditions for that purpose, it can really work. But if it's, if it's just someone decides just to maximize opportunity, then it creates, it creates a different environment. That's what I was trying to say earlier, I wasn't trying to, when I was saying that the four lots I own in San Bruno, there's such a huge mix of development there, apartment buildings, huge houses, lots, lots of apartments and lots of single dwelling mixed right in there. And so whether it's, it's best use, I don't know, but I think this is a time that, this is important, just as Commissioner Madden was saying, it will, you know, some of these home places have larger lots and to start breaking them up into two, it starts to change things. So I look forward to thinking about this in a bigger, in a bigger way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to have one more comment to my fellow commissioners. You know, I just want to say thank you for your efforts up to this point, and I hope all of you continue to remain energized and with the commission because I don't, I don't even know what I want to say, but it's like, I hope that we continue to do the kind of work that we've done up to now. And I don't want to see anyone get disheartened and walk away from the commission because we're all talented people, we all bring a lot to the table. And I appreciate, I appreciate everybody, even though I see changes coming with this new law. So thank you all for being here and being part of this. Does anyone else have anything before we go? Okay, so we'll move on to item six, items from staff. And that would be the November eighteenth ARC, Architectural Review Special Meeting. Any volunteers? Are you?
Okay, yeah. Commissioner Johnson's volunteering for that?
I'll do it.
And Chair Fasadi, okay? And someone else, another?
Was it November eleventh or eighteen?
Eighteen.
November eighteen, yeah, it's a special meeting.
Right.
Do you know topic?
Uh, yes, there's a, we'll be reviewing a, a small property on El Camino Real.
I'm available, you know, if we need people.
And I did check, yeah, I did check the maps and no one has a, a conflict. So, yeah, so we've got, we've got the chair, vice chair, and Commissioner Johnson for that meeting. So, so now we would need, we, we, I'm not sure, I imagine we will have items for the December A R C meeting. So if I can get three, three volunteers for that, okay, so same two.
What's the date for that meeting? It's December sixteenth. Yeah, December sixteenth.
Uh, December sixteenth.
They can volunteer for that.
Okay, great, thank you.
You were right, our, our A R Cs are six P M. rather than seven P M.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's out of the way. And item seven, public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the commission at this time? Either raise your hand with Zoom or start line on the phone, please, we'll give you a minute or two to organize. Michael, are you seeing anyone on your side there?
No, no.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item eight, items from members and subcommittee reports, anyone have anything for us this evening? No? All right, with that, we'll move to item nine, which is adjournment, and we will be adjourned into adjourned until November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. Thank you everyone for your hard work this evening. Thanks to see you all.
Thank you all.
Good night.
All right, take it.